Madam Chairman, we're left.
Good morning and welcome to our Monday, May 19th meeting. First up is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll all join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We all have a chance to look at the agenda. So I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
The move in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting minutes. I did have a couple of things I asked Doug to change. Do you not have any changes? Okay, I'd like to hear a motion.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes as written.
Second.
Or as amended, or as amended, sorry. Okay, thank you. It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Donley Bible Church lease agreement. Is this new, Doug?
It is, Madam Chairman. They have not required it in the past. This is something that they are now requiring. As you can see, it has been reviewed by legal. And we did provide them with the insurance requirements that they were looking for through ICRAP. And now we're just asking the commissioners to approve the release of liability agreement. But Madam Chairman, no, this is just a new requirement that the Donley Bible Church is requesting.
Do you feel, moving forward, we need to do this one anyway for this year? But moving forward, will you look at maybe the fire department or something that wouldn't charge? Or is it large enough?
Madam Chairman, they charge us a really, a minimal fee. It's $150 just for cleaning, which is acceptable.
Makes sense.
To try to find another location in Donley is going to be problematic. I mean, our options are very, are limited, right? We could do potentially this, the city in their little area. But the parking is going to be problematic. We could potentially do the school, but I don't know if the school would allow us.
The church, too?
Yeah. And then the fire department might be an option. However, at the fire department, we probably have to set something up in the bays because ADA accessibility, if you recall.
They don't have an elevator, do they?
They have an elevator there.
Oh, interesting.
So honestly, the churches are our best option and we can, if the release of liability is, if that's going to be required by them and it's approved by our legal counsel, I think the commissioner should just be inclined to move forward.
I think it's not a bad idea to just leave it like it is. Because I understand the liability. When somebody falls in the parking lot, going into a boot, falls on the steps, whatever, I think it's wise that they're doing a liability deal for them. So I'm good with that. And I'll make a motion that we accept agreement lease, lease agreement with the Donley Bible Church for election day.
The move in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the fiber network approval letter. The WCM fiber network has been working with a group trying to figure out how to provide open access networks up here. So it would be a direct competition for Zipline, Sparklight. But it would be a public entity that would own the fiber. I want to sign that one, you got a second? And so this agreement is just moving forward with looking for investors to see instead of using like BEANetworking, which is the federal monies, which are not available to us because it requires a large match, that there may be an investor that would like to invest in this area with this open fiber network. So this doesn't obligate us in any way. This just makes it so that it, what allows us to move forward in this research. I did not want to sign anything until we had approval from everyone to do that. So if you guys have any questions on that.
Thank you, sir.
So this is simply just to look into it? It's not a...
Yeah. There's no obligations, there's nothing there, so.
I'll just allowance for some, okay.
So if you guys are in favor, I would take a motion to approve that and then I will sign it.
I would move that we approve the West Central Mountain cyber network letter.
Second.
I moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then the Cascade Community Lease Agreement. I sent it over on the Senior Center. It is asking them right now to pay their own smell removal and to pay half of the utility expenses for now. And if you guys are in agreement with that, this would take us through the end of September. Just for this fiscal year, we should have had it at the first of September.
And this is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this thing to go. Oh, Senior Center, yeah, I read all that. So that gives us us through the end of our fiscal year, basically.
Yeah. We'll start fresh on October 1st.
I'm, I'm good with that.
This is just the lease and we're still going to work on an MOU that's going to have like what they, any criteria they need to meet or reporting type.
Yes. Yeah. We can strengthen this lease with an MOU on what types of services they should be offering. I think, I can't remember it, I don't know if that one actually calls out the fact that they're to provide breakfast. I think it provides two days' worth of senior activities. But we can strengthen that verbiage through an MOU.
And they still have to... And that's, reading their stuff, they, they were confused whether they were doing the MOU or we were. Weren't they, weren't they going to bring that to us, an MOU?
I don't know that we have that actually documented. But one of their questions was, do they actually sublease the north end of it? And I said, no, we will take care of all leasing on that subend and whoever's going in there, they don't have anything to do with that. But I think that having an actual MOU to strengthen that's...
For their end.
Yeah. On what they're to be providing for this benefit that they're receiving.
And I, from reading it, it seemed like they weren't clear about if they were supposed to write up the MOU or if the county was. That's what I was reading.
Right, I think that's correct. It was when we were, had limited staff to help us with an MOU.
I think, I think we can go ahead and take that and see, see what, I think we can work on that moving forward. So the lease was the important part so they can have the keys.
Right.
And start, go ahead and offering services.
Does this lease need to go through legal?
It did.
Oh, it did?
Yep, they did. They actually wrote it.
Okay.
Just input from our meeting, last meeting, so.
I would move that we approve the Cascade Community Lease Agreement with Cascade Senior Center.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I did not print that off. I can print it off and I'll bring it up.
Okay. All right. Next up is an agreement between Valley County and IDPR on the off-highway vehicle program. Mr. Stan Ball.
It's just an agreement for the funds that we earn throughout the year. In fact, I think we just, this weekend, they did a OHV class that covered what we need to do for the year already, so.
Have we gotten this in the past? I don't remember.
Have we had these in the past?
Did this every year? Has it stayed the same, gone up?
It's gone up. It went up quite a bit from last year and the more OHV class, and I don't think we did an OHV class last year. So the more OHV classes you do, the more it goes up.
Okay.
So we try to schedule them. We usually only have three to four people that show up for them, but.
I was just curious, as far as the, it looked like that we were also required to provide some sheriff's deputies out on trails?
Yeah, well, I mean, that, we cover that tenfold on the backcountry stuff.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting any obligations there that...
No.
Are going to be difficult to meet, so.
So your OHV is kind of like the Stars program in a way? You're just teaching people how to drive safely and not be...
Side-by-sides, dirt bikes, yeah, they have a little course they set up and put them through. Teaching them laws and stuff.
Good, that's good. And not to drive on the lake when it's frozen and fall through.
Leave that one alone.
Maybe not drunk with alcohol while you're driving. I would have a motion to approve then.
I would move that we approve the agreement between Valley County and Idaho Department of Parks and for off-highway vehicle program.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
And then an MOU with Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission.
Yeah, that's to, once we, where is that one? It's the current, the trucking fees will stop once the program's accepted and implemented. So this is just a agreement that we're, we're entering to provide this data. So it's something current. They're going to extend it into when they go next-gen 911, it'll, it will all run to that. It's just everything, the groundwork of getting everything into place.
Who's the agreement with, Dave?
This one's with IPSC regarding the sharing of public information. GIS mostly, GIS data, so they can put it into the system.
Can I make a motion that we accept the memorandum agreement with Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission?
Okay. It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. And then approval to auction off a waterways boat.
Yes, and I sent you guys pictures of it, I think, or I sent a lot of pictures. So, yeah, we want to just put it on that public auction site and move it out of here. Just to let you guys know.
Is it still operational and...
I believe so, yes. I don't know if that's the one where they put too big of an engine in it and that the trailer can't handle it because of the weight or not. I don't, I'd have to check, but I know that its usefulness is...
It's outliving its usefulness.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I guess I really don't have any other questions about that then. I saw the picture. Make a motion that we approve to auction the waterways boat.
Second. It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Captain, do you want to have them sign?
Do they have a copy of it? Or I've got copies of it.
Yeah, if you can just take the copies of that you have. Thank you.
And then you don't want anything for the sale of the boat?
Yep, we, it's good enough.
Am I the data provider? I'm the data provider.
I would just sign underneath that, Madam Chairman. I don't think that...
It's already there.
How do you come up with a price for a boat? Used boat like that?
Uh, now, I, we're going to have to check like NADA, NADA or whatever it's called to see what they've outlined this, but it's going to be hard. I think it's kind of a pretty old boat, but.
Can you put like a minimum and then see how much, what the auction actually brings?
Yeah, I forget what that's called, where you put the...
Minimum bid on that.
Minimum bid type thing and then anything up from there. But, yeah, we'll see what Jeff has to, he may know some sites to put it on.
Thank you. Director Harret, facts and conclusions for City of Cascade, City of Donley. I did not have any questions after reading it, but didn't have any either. Anything from the staff that you want us to look at specifically?
No. We have the updated maps. The ordinances are ready to be recorded. The resolution's ready to be recorded. This is tying it up to, in order to do that, and then it will all be published next Thursday. And that's when the effective date will be.
Anybody have any further questions for staff after reading all of it?
I do not.
Would you like two different motions? Please.
Did you provide one? Do you want to go ahead and...
I would move that we approve the City of Cascade facts and conclusions for ordinance 2025-04 impact area.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
I would move that we approve the City of Donley facts and conclusions for ordinance 2025-05 impact area.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
And will you hand those, Doug, if you stand right there? Okay. Five minutes, we'll wait for our grant writer, Mr. Schlegel, to come up unless, Doug, you're doing it.
No, I believe Mr. Schlegel's coming up.
Do you record the facts and conclusions?
We're back on, Madam Chairman.
Welcome back to our meeting of the morning of May 19th. Up next is our grant writer, Ken Schlegel.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have one item for you. It's the authorization to apply for the Stibnite Foundation grant. This is to request money to put toward the Sampson Trail Phase II project, requesting $10,000. So again, it's just the authorization to apply.
How close would this grant get us to being, having this project fully funded?
We're still quite a ways away. I think we're trying to close a $200,000 to $300,000 gap. This is $10,000 toward that. We have a couple of other grants, one from them called Rotary for 1,200. We have a pledge from Valley County Pathways to fundraise $50,000 toward that. And so we're, we still have a ways to go. I know that Dave Vinghamman is getting ready to go out for another RFQ to see if we can lower the amount that we think that we're going to need from $500,000 down to $4,350, somewhere in there. We do have a $250,000 grant from the Child Pedestrian Safety through LTAC, which got us about halfway there. But we still have a ways to go to, to complete the project. In talking with Dave, he said that whatever monies we will get, we'll, we'll just go as far as we can and then just, you know, try and peter out the end of it till we get, till we're done.
I would move that we authorize the submission of an application to the Stibnite Foundation for Sampson Trail Pathway Phase II project.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any funding we can find.
That's right. My tax money.
Not yours, mine.
All of ours.
City of McCall.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, technically, it's what funding, or, no, Stibnite. No, it's Stibnite's money. It's not even ours.
It is Stibnite's.
No tax money.
This is out of the Stibnite group.
Out of their foundation. It's out of their foundation.
Their foundation, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
All right, thank you.
That is awesome.
Thank you.
They do give back to the community. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay. And now we're on hold until just a couple more minutes when Director Harret will be in for her budget workshop. Budget workshops, oh joy, this is your first time. Yay. Nope, whatever. I'm just wondering, so in the past, I've asked to have the number of previous years so we can see trends.
Okay.
And we've only gotten 24s.
Okay.
So moving forward, I don't know if Gabby has the ability to do. I'm not as familiar with Tyler as I was from computer arts.
Madam Chairman, I believe what I'm going to be showing will have 23, but let me, yeah, I do apologize if...
Okay, we did not get the 23 on ours.
Okay.
So, yeah, if she would send at least two years previous, that would be great.
Okay.
Just so we can check trends. And as a matter of fact, I mean, the 25 is important just to show if we're over or under this year, but... Morning. Do you want to go ahead and come up and move that microphone over and we'll just have everybody sit at the table?
Madam Chairman, I apologize. Can I just step out one moment?
Absolutely. All right, welcome back to our May 19th meeting. Up next are some budget workshops. We are starting our budget for year 2026. So first up is our director, Senator Harret from Finding and Zoning. And you have the floor. Invinces of your needs.
There's not enough time. So if you go down, we increased the travel mileage to include the APA Commission because they'll be four times a year. So then we take their mileage and times it by that four. And that's, that was an additional $378. And that goes into fund 0430. Can't see the funds up there.
That's fine.
Okay.
It doesn't matter to us on the fund.
Okay.
And just backing up for a second for my fellow commissioners. So since Commissioner Caldwell hasn't done this before, we always have the previous two years so we can actually see what was budgeted then. And then it tells us, no, it doesn't give us what they actually expect.
So these are actual expenses?
These are actual expenses, thank you.
So what you're showing right now are actual expenses?
And then we can kind of see where they're at as far as this year's budget. And so all those that are severely over or severely under are the ones that we're really trying to look toward. We're not doing salaries yet. That will come later. So these, and A and B are the benefits also. So we're not doing salaries and benefits. We're only doing the things that they specifically control during these meetings.
Quick question, it says FY '25 final. How can those be final numbers when we're not into September 31st? That's just budgeted.
That's, this is what was budgeted in fiscal year 2025.
Okay, that's your budgeted number.
For this year, and then this is the requested.
We're at through activity through May is that line.
Correct, okay.
I follow you.
It's great because none of those are over your budget yet. And Sinda, when I'm thinking about your guys' budget, I'm assuming that supplies are because we will be moving you to a new location, you are going to have to have some additional supplies, that type of thing, at your new location.
Chairman, Commissioners, my apologies, what's been expended so far is $872.82. Budget available is $1,797.18. As Planning and Zoning Director Herrick has indicated, they still have some conferences that they will be attending this year, as well as mileages, mileage to pay for planning and zoning commissioners for this year. So that's why they still have a significant amount, but Commissioners, the majority of their conferences will be taking place over the summer.
I was very good about meeting budgets, so very cognizant of budget.
So the travel mileage is just the P and C Commissioners and the APA Commission. And that does not include our travel other, which is for staff, to go to conferences, trainings, that type of thing.
Did you find that with the addition of staff to you last year, that that travel budget was still appropriate? Because you do have code compliance now doing travel.
No, so in my request to Budget Officer, I'd asked for $10,177. It's not indicated there?
Okay. So, and I do think, Doug, you might take note of that one. Yeah, because I do think the impact area conversation is also going to, going to be a large conversation as far as trainings required, that type of thing, if we get there, so.
So the bottom line disappeared. Bottom line of '25 and the bottom line of '26, there's only, not even a thousand dollars difference. Am I reading that right? 305 to 306.
That one, he has it on the 704.5 is this year's, and I'm asking for that to be increased to $10,177. And that's based upon the spreadsheet I do that anticipates those costs.
I apologize.
That's okay.
That one right there. That's the line you want to, travel line, you want it raised up to $10,000?
704.5. And then because of the additional personnel. Todd went to Oklahoma last year for a code compliance conference. He then went to the building seminars down in Boise last year for the residential codes. And then he, Hannah needs to attend some things. This will be Lori's last year at the Northwest Community Development Institute in Boise. It's her third year, so she will graduate.
That's awesome.
And then we have our typical conferences that we go to.
Yeah, Todd, Todd does, I mean, to me, he seems like he's working out real well. He enjoys, enjoys what he's doing.
That's pretty awesome.
And, you know, so is Hannah, I mean, and I'd really like to get hers some training of some sort. And they do have some permit tech classes right above.
I just met her the other day.
Do you think that the 3,500 on the Sterling codifiers will be enough? I know that we are doing some updates to the pump plan, updates to ordinances, so we will have to refile all of those.
We will have to see. I mean, you can put more in there.
I just don't know how much it costs to do all of that kind of update, but we may have some.
Impact area stuff, I mean, I think most of it's going to come through this year.
I think, yeah.
All that stuff we did today will be out of this budget. So next year, hopefully we won't have a bunch.
Right, so we may be over for this year. Well, no, we still have quite a little bit in there, but hey. I'm not going to go line item by line item the way L did. I don't think it's, you know, I don't think that's needed. What I'm looking for is those large differences, increases to budget, or large discrepancies between our total activity year-to-date and the parental budget. So those are the things I'll be looking for. In the past, we've gone line item by line item, and I just don't think that that's necessary.
I agree.
Yeah, we increased our education budget from the 4,500 to 4,665. And there is one P and C Commissioner now that's going to attend a class next fall, and it should come out of this year's budget. And it's kind of spending, and she's going to split it with us.
Oh, nice. The other thing that I am looking at is the engineering. So now having our engineer on board, do you see that that is making a difference in what our engineering fees are?
No.
Not yet?
Not yet. Because it's still just a pass-through. I mean, they still, when we use parametrics, they still charge us and we pass that cost on at 105%. Mostly the site grading stormwater management plans that Dan, or the engineers review, they're submitting now to Dan, and then Dan is sending those to parametrics. And then we're using him to go through until he's comfortable. And maybe some of the smaller stuff he'll do, but the big stuff is not doing.
It's going to take a while.
Well, you'd need more staff.
Yeah. Well, and I think that line is really going to be incumbent upon how busy we are in that department. So it looks like this year we might be down a little bit so far between now and the end of the year, so we might have some savings there, but I don't know that within the next year we'll have a ton of engineering fees that would change. But again, you know, this budget might, might be incumbent upon that impact area. That's, I think, why the city is requesting a 90-day review, their budget's going to be impacted, our budget's going to be impacted. So some of these things might need to be revisited depending on that final decision.
The engineering is just a pass-through, and so far this year, we have received $10,961.
So is that kind of?
We have some sitting out there.
Because we don't collect it until we go to final plot.
Isn't that a lot of that engineering end up with like subdivisions and whatnot?
Okay, I don't have any further questions for Sinda.
All right, it looks good.
Just Doug, just so that I know on your salaries, are you guys doing a 3% increase? Is that?
We will be presenting that to the Commissioners, yeah, the 3% typically is presented. We're also working with HR Director to determine if there's any positions that need to be looked at as well. Sometimes he singles out specific, specific positions that he will make recommendations based on market, so yes, we.
So really, some of these budgets, you guys are not adjusting salaries yet that would hit that bottom line? Okay, so these salary numbers are from last year, they're not being, okay. So what I'm looking at that bottom line, Sinda's only asking for an additional really $600.
Well, there's more than that because there's, there's matter, there, it looks like we failed to get the requested increase, so we'll need to make that adjustment, as well as I heard her say that we did not capture the other education other increase by $600. So that's going to be increased as well.
It's right about 4,500. So questions so that we don't have to remember that those didn't get captured as we move forward. Do you amend those and then send them back to the Directors?
Yes, for review, yeah. And we'll, we'll get this done immediately.
Okay, thank you. All right, Sinda, anything else you need to?
I just have one question, you know, the code compliance position is, I mean, I guess it is a budget, but how do they get increased? I mean, he's going to weed classes and B and P classes, I mean, he's doing a lot more than I anticipated as far as compliance for other departments.
Why don't you work with HR? I'm looking at that job description, and then also looking, do we need code compliance 123, where there may be an increase potential dependent upon certifications they receive?
We don't really get certified.
Well, but, maybe not cert, but the education receipt. We do that with other positions within the county. So let's, let's talk to HR and find out, you know, what we might be able to set up on a tier basis. You don't want that position that isn't willing to do those types of extra classes to receive financial compensation.
Right, and if, if we tier that, I mean, if we do, I get a lot of unanticipated code compliance stuff, we might have to, you know, fill that position, but.
The same thing they do at the, you know, Road Department, Tech 1, Tech 2, you know, it's, if this guy's taking all those classes and it's that kind of experience, he deserves it. I mean, Building Department does it, all of them do it, so. I agree.
All right, thank you. Thanks for always fighting for your employees. Up next is our Building Director, Annette Derrick.
Good morning. We are doing things a little bit differently this year. We're not going to cover it like we have in the past, so we are going to look for discrepancies and differences in what you had previously. So it's like you have a little bit more travel mileage that you're anticipating.
Pretty much it.
In education, is that because of new employees or why, why the travel mileage? Is it just because of increased gas costs or?
It could be both, it's increased gas and.
Do you think you will have more inspectors on the job this year? Is that your thought behind it or?
That's what I'm hoping.
So with changes in the area of impact in McCall, will that also change this? So we may have to revisit this once decisions are made up there? We do need to make sure that we are highlighting the departments that would have the most change.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it would really affect travel mileage. I'm not sure how much it would affect it if you get a new inspector.
A change of salaries. So one of the comments that was made at the last meeting was that John Powell, their inspector, gets called a lot into the AOI, just, hey, I've got a concrete truck sitting here, I need an inspection. Would that change the way that we as a county would respond to that same call? I mean, you just get up and go to that if?
If we can, we, we can do that right now. We have some leftover, we can get out there as fast as possible.
And if you can't get out there as fast as possible, do they, we do it through them sending you a picture or, so there are avenues technology-wise to do that work and not have to have somebody physically leave the building to go do that work?
It's better to physically leave, I mean, if you're out in the field.
And with new software, that will even improve our ability to do those types of things.
So we're, if this turns around where we administer the AOI, and all the building permits and everything comes through us, is that correct? Okay, so the question. I do that quite often with my inspectors, just take a picture or something, they'll call me, I can't get there, can I take a picture? And it works on services and little stuff, this whole building, yeah, they got to show up.
They passed something, I can't remember the name of it, I have it on my desk, where you can use drones now for inspection.
Drones?
Interesting. It's passed, I think it is in July of last year.
Technically, you'd still have to be on-site, so you can't just let it leave.
Might be coming in the future.
Now she's got to go to another class, we got to buy a $50,000 drone.
And yet it appears that you guys are not even close to meeting your need on cellular phones.
We have that on there because of planning program, you know, you get a new software tablets. Jeremy said just keep it in there.
Okay. Makes sense then. Did you get your tablets yet?
Not yet, so we're just going to wait until we get the new software.
I know you guys.
I know the state inspectors have the screen right there in their truck, do your guys have that?
That's what we're trying to get.
Trying to get that set up.
We're working on for you.
So they can make all the notes right there and send it out, and, oh, that's pretty, yeah, it works for those guys, they've been doing it for years, so.
I believe that IT is waiting on you and planning and zoning to make decisions. Are you guys close?
Look at the three we've looked at, and then look at two of them.
And do you have in your supply budget enough money to move to the new location? Or maybe some new info, or new stuff you need? Might be sharing stuff with other departments now, might make it less expensive, but I did notice you're right there at your supply budget, you're not giving yourself any extra for that. I recommend you may want to bump that 250 bucks or something, just to make sure that we have enough there, because I think you're even over the last couple of years of what you were needing, so.
Have we, have we discussed, are we moving these codes?
That'll have to be in our budget probably, or some, maybe facilities.
Two men in a truck and a trailer?
Well, I think it's going to have to be three sons from the valley. We're going to have to hire a moving company. They'll have to box it all up and put it in boxes and just hire a moving company to move them all over a weekend and get it done.
Yeah, that's going to be an all-hands-on next deal, and we're only moving one department at a time, hopefully.
Don't know, we'll have that discussion, but that's outside of, outside of this one, so.
I know, I know.
Don't comment at this moment in time. All right, Doug, will you get us back to the other screen? Thank you very much. Anything else on this? Look, what's the refunds? Looks like we haven't given any refunds. Looks like we still need to leave that in there?
I would.
Just because prior years, looks like we pretty much were there. And not certain what the economy will do, if somebody's already paid for their permits and then pricing goes up and they come back in and get a refund, I think that's what that process is.
Yeah, they can get.
Don't they only have so much time to be able to get a refund, though?
Yeah, it, it varies if, if they haven't started any work, they can get 80% of the billing fee.
That's fair. I mean, a lot, a lot of people pulled projects fall last year just because they were unsure of, you know, politics. So I get that, that makes sense. Okay.
I didn't see anything else that.
Looks good.
Went up 500 bucks, but it will have another 250 on there for supplies.
And then, what do you say, the wages?
That's not being looked at yet.
All right.
That'll come later.
That'll come later.
All right, I'll take a big bump in wages if possible.
Your sentiment is heard, but the taxpayers respond.
All right, thank you.
Next one's up at 10, so if you guys would like a short break.
Mark Miller, if you'll get us back on.
Yes ma'am, here we are back on.
I mean, I don't know. Up next is our budget workshop with our treasurer. So we're doing a little bit differently this year, we're not going line item by line item. We're just looking for discrepancies, if you're over or under your budget from this year, and then any large increases you're asking for, so.
Perfect, well, this should be easy then.
So, we're not doing anything on salaries yet, so travel's the same. Travel, are you thinking about NACO at all?
Uh, not this year. Uh, travel is always really low at this time of year because the association conference isn't until August. So I don't usually spend the, the travel money until the very end of the fiscal year.
Um, any training that you could perceive for your employees that might increase that travel budget?
Um, no, not, not the travel budget, but we do have, uh, education budget down at the bottom there.
Okay.
Um, and right now, we're looking at a couple of different classes. One of them is a money handling class, and then the other one is a dealing with difficult people, de-escalating situation type of class. So, those are mostly online. Um, I've had, in the past, my employees have taken computer knowledge courses such as, Excel, Word, um, some basic accounting classes, stuff like that. So, really, it's, it's based on need of the employee, and I encourage each of them to, to look into something.
You just have the two full-time ladies that are over there?
Correct, yeah, two full-time, and then I share an employee with the clerk. Uh, she, Kirsten comes up during busy times and helps our office during tax drive.
Okay.
So NACO does offer a professional development course. Your chief deputy, I don't know if she's had any of that yet, but that might be something to consider putting her through too. You could ask Gabby about it, Gabby's taken it before, there's a number of employees throughout the county that's taken it.
Yes, I'll, I'll look into that.
Yeah, yours is pretty straightforward.
Yep, I don't see anything. Mine hasn't changed since I've been here as treasurer, except for to increase that professional services line. And, um, that's a line that we use for if we need to design a brochure that goes out in the, um, with the tax bills, or if, uh, I need some investment advice, things like that. Uh, this year, we are looking at, uh, transitioning to kind of a new online platform for how people look up and pay, for their property taxes, and if we do that, it would require the development of a professional document to walk people through that. And so that's why I decided to keep ours.
It's a new software?
No, it's not a new software, it's essentially the company that prints our tax statements. Right now, there's an online portal for people to be able to access a digital version of their statement. This is just kind of an upgraded online portal, no cost to us at the county, it's just a, a different situation, working with IT on, on determining.
Do you put a big smiley face on your bills when they go out?
Add in a little Christmas decoration.
There you go.
I don't see anything. I have any further questions on, does anybody else have any questions for our treasurer? Thank you for being justly responsible. Ending our taxpayer money well. Okay, we're not working on salaries yet, so we'll have that conversation on the, there. Thank you.
Alright.
Thanks to you, Anna.
Let's just move on with the next one. Next up is our director, Laura Halobeczek, for wildfire mitigation. Since this is a new division, we only have this year's activity to kind of look at. Then, as we move forward, as far as this salary is being covered right now by a grant, eventually, we're going to have to either incorporate that into the county's budget, or look at what the grants are doing a couple of years from now. But those that'll be on the council longer than I, just always keep that in the back of your mind. We need to start incorporating some of this in, and also, I'm not seeing yet, we're not talking salaries, but I don't see anything up here as far as adding an employee to this.
I'm recommending adding an employee, I work in HR right now, to come up with that range. That job description.
And it would be a full-time? Okay, so that will impact your salaries and, but knowing that if we were to, I'm sorry. Finish one thought. Knowing that, um, are the rest of your line items appropriate? Because I would think then you're gonna need extra cell phone, extra gas.
Correct.
Education, all that, so you've built that into this?
Yep, so we have two budgets created, if that one gets approved, if the position gets approved, all of these will be increased as well. So there's that caveat, if that position is approved. Travel will go up, supplies won't go, utilities will, vehicle will, communication will. Essentially double, helping two of us to be able to, trainings, vehicle, those kind of costs.
So, and. Yeah, I get that, and what I, I know Mara, you and I have talked about. Your position be coming integrated into the county someday. What concerned me is what I've seen the climate happening with the tourist service. I know you're set with the grant for, what, four more years? If the worst keeps going the way it is, it's gonna be taken over by IDL. Could happen, you know, that's worst scenario. Don't wanna lose this girl. I mean, you're, what you do is just phenomenal, you're doing a great job. And I'm keeping my mind, how can we? Make you part of the county down the road. I don't know if you're thinking, cause I'm always thinking down the road.
Well, grants will always help cover some of the position and not fully. So that's the biggest caveat with this position always is, in the past, it's been covered by Title III, which now is gone, as it right now. Right? But the grants that I do do with IDL, I can get twenty to thirty grand covered of the salary. Potentially every two years, um, if I can just, I can finish out a full grant in one year, then I can get that back in one year. So it just really depends how fast I can put that money on the ground. And this position just incorporates so many different things, besides just implementation, which intrigues me the most about this position. That's also why it's hard to get more grant funding to cover the position, is because I'm doing different aspects, that's not just implementing.
I just wanna know that you're being proactive thinking about that, because that's.
And I am.
That's, that's a concern to me.
Yeah, and like I said, we are, I am gonna be able to bring some funding in, but it won't be able to cover the position fully, really ever. And then obviously, another position, um, if I do have another worker, I'll be able to cover that one more, cause that one will be more focused on implementing. There's always gonna be a portion of both positions, if there is two, that the county will have to cover, um, as their funding.
I look at it that this is a high priority for Valley County, and it doesn't matter who owns the forest, who owns the, because what Mara's work is, is implementing on the ground on private property, so this is homeowners. And we're gonna have to look at funding mechanisms moving forward for that, yes. There may have to be, you know, some fee structure, some whatever that looks like, but wildfire mitigation will always be a large concern for Valley County residents.
Absolutely, uh, it's just, you know, it's. I think Mara is an employee of the county, even though, you know, she's being funded elsewhere.
Yeah, and I mean, it's truly unknown right now what's gonna happen, right? They might be able to be more funding down with GNA to help with that stuff, cause that's kind of the push, right? If you're actually looking at what their structuring is, they're wanting the counties and the state to take over and help, and help implement a little bit.
Sure, sure.
So I mean, it's just so unknown that. Yes, I'm looking at grants, looking at how I can get most of the position covered, um, just realistically. That's unknown if it will always be.
So to, to add another employee, you have that factored into here?
Not this one, nope. This one is just strictly if just my position comes back, which it will, and then that's based off of the, inputs that, um, made or Doug created last year with me, um, and we haven't changed anything actually from that one. There's no changes to this whatsoever.
So you, I mean, you're talking about putting on another employee for this summer or for?
No, it would be next fiscal year.
For next fiscal year? Okay.
So the goal is, if it did get approved, um, to hire it anywhere over the winter time.
What I appreciate, I think, is that Mara is really on top of her grant funding, and so I don't think that's something that we need to consistently be reminding her of. We all understand that these grants may, but as a commission, we need to be thinking forward, what is the biggest risk to Valley County? And it's probably wildfire at this point, and it may come to a point where we have to decide, is this more important than some of the other funding that we give? So, rather than just consistently focusing on grants, I think we can focus on what she's done with her program and how to, how we can try to keep moving it forward for Valley County.
Oh yeah, oh no, I agree, and I just, Neil doesn't trust grants at all.
Well, and SRS funding is one of the main avenues too, so it depends on what SRS does the next few years.
I, did you get the deal from Callan, or you may have got that too, they may.
Yes, I, I apologize, Sharon, that you had already seen it.
No, no worries at all.
They may even shoot it, so that's awesome.
My fellow commissioners, I always keep an Excel spreadsheet on the request for additional employees. If you guys would like that, I can send to you, but also, the clerk's office could probably provide an Excel spreadsheet so that we're documenting the number of requests of new employees as we go down through this budgeting process.
Is there a way to put like that in a shared folder that we could all access, so that we're not emailing back and forth? Document that may not be up to date.
And so, I guess the question I do have is, if, if that position is approved for my department, would we have another budget meeting to go over the increases for these things?
Yeah, absolutely. Mara, this is just like the initial, uh, I guess, initial conversation with the commissioners to show them what the requests are right now, with the understanding that there might be additional requests made in the very near future. Um, this is just the first of many workshops with the commissioners to discuss the.
I think we level set every time, you know, we will level set multiple times throughout this process. We're all on the same page in where we're at on that day.
Don't wanna lose you.
Well, I, I think again that this is a, a division that's been added to the county with good reason, and we just continue to work on that as we move forward, and the funding mechanisms to get there.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I don't know if you wanna talk about it now, but of course, Title III, a- as we know, that based on my calculations with all of the committed funds, will be down to about thirty thousand dollars, uh, at the end of the fiscal year. That will be carried over to next fiscal year, we don't have replenish of Title III. That will be carried over to next fiscal year, we don't have replenish of Title III, so thirty thousand is what we're basically gonna be starting off with in fiscal year twenty twenty six. And I think the commissioners need to really determine, are those gonna be utilized for homeowner grants? Or are they gonna be used for requests made by the emergency services manager for the G I S mapping that's being conducted? Unfortunately, the commissioners are gonna have to make some hard decisions next year regarding. The remaining amount of Title III, based on what's been committed for this fiscal year. It's roughly thirty one thousand dollars, which will be carried over.
And those are all uncommitted funds at this moment?
At this moment, yes.
So just to give you some oversight too, this year I budgeted with Title III funds about twenty five grand to do outreach and education. That incorporates creating signs, brochures, we're doing a. Build lip at the movie theater, so the different things like that.
But that's already out of the budget.
Out of this budget, so it's still, there's still be thirty. And so that's one thing is if all that funding is used for different allocations. Is my budget might change because then I'll have some of that stuff in my actual budget. So really, the. Outreach in the future for wildfire mitigation could be a big topic of discussion of what the intent and what you guys want me to do. I think that's the biggest thing is education, right? And so all the education has been coming out of S R S funds, and once that's gone, what's gonna allocate some of that, those resources?
Have you been, I mean, when you're talking education, you see the climate of this. Have you been using social media to try to update and educate people on your stuff?
Yep, so I facilitate two social media platforms for the county, I have Valley County Firewise page. And then I have the Valley County Fireworking page. So I create all, me and Kendra create all the social media output. And sometimes we'll reach out to Mackenzie to help with some of that, to put it on the Valley County one. But we do have our own solicitation for those two groups. I am on the weekends, after hours, posting social media things for that education purpose. The main reason for that is because I wanted a platform strictly for fire mitigation. Where Valley County has a ton of viewers, but there's so many things that are in there that I felt like the fire mitigation, fire education was gonna get lost in it. And so that's why I requested when I first got this position, my own platform.
A Valley County Fireworking Group and Valley County Fire, Firewise.
Firewise.
That's awesome.
So questions on some of that? Since we do know that S R S is at risk all the time. What other partners do we have? Like Firewise, normally, I mean, it's a large pool of funds too, is there any funding through Firewise we can attain?
So I've been reaching out to Brian Davis with Shared Storage Ship, and he's looking at doing some agreements within the I D L to help with education and outreach. I'm actually meeting with some contractors next week to kind of get some bids of like truly determining what outreach could cost. Especially on a social media platform, because every time you put something out there, you can boost it for ten dollars, right? And that's how you get a lot of followers, and that's how Valley County has so many followers, is they do that. Where mine right now is free, so it's just me tagging and posting constantly to get the followers. So there's different things, or there's, they call it fencing, where you can put an ad out, you have to pay for it. When someone drives by a certain area, so like someone drives by the highway here by the courthouse, it's. Pings that phone and then sends that ad to that phone, so that kind of stuff can help. It's, it's way above my head.
That's how they stalk us.
It is, it's.
We're getting spammed.
Right, but that's how you get that message out there, and so I'm meeting with a couple contractors to see what that kind of cost could be. To see if I can find funding somewhere else and grants. So grant season's coming up, so I'm trying to work ahead of time to get kind of some of these cost estimates. But really, like I said, Title III has been covering a lot of that stuff today with brochures, movie theater ad.
And I'm wondering about the city, so McCall is a Firewise city, I don't know if they have funding that could help with any of this.
I am reaching out to Erin Green.
To have Cascade become a Firewise city, they definitely have the fuel load to have issues. Donley really doesn't, so I don't know their interest, but you know, the smaller communities, there might be opportunities. Lot funds might be opportunities.
And that's one of the goals, to start creating more Firewise communities, but it's really up to them to create that because they have to keep their standard up. There's volunteer hours associated with it, there's. Community assessment, and that's where I come in, is I help with those community assessments, those individual careful assessments. So I create documents for them in like future goals. I can send some of those to you guys, so you can have a look at some of those tablets I've created. But it gives them stepping stones to create, keep that culture in their community. Because that's the whole goal of a Firewise community, them doing some sort of volunteer hours every year to mitigation.
Have you heard anything on the budget bill that just passed the House yesterday coming out of budget if S R S was included? I know it was included on the Ag Committee budget, so I think that the conversation just needs to be on hold until we figure out what the budget looks like. We're supposed to be signing it by July, which is still prior to what our year ends will be as far as those approvals, so. I think that's gonna make just a part of that conversation, and we know that we have thirty, and personally, I think Mara should control what that budget is. Moving forward, so I don't know what you guys think, but I think if Juan does need funding, it needs to go through Mara. Because the wildfire mitigation, that is what those funds are for. And we've never really had anybody in charge of that budget in prior years, but I think now that we do have this division within the county, Mara should control those budget items. Yeah, I know that they have a lot of good collaboration there.
And we created that mobile worth assessment with some of those Title III funds that we're actually gonna be presenting to you in the next couple of weeks. There is a cost associated with the G I S portal, so that's something that is a future discussion.
And I do think that we should try and keep that up, I think our, our portal is key and critical. I'm very technology based moving forward, you know, those zones need to be on there. We need to make sure that people have an understanding where they are, so they are gonna need tools to do that. So I think our tools are important. If we can't provide wildfire grants the next few years, I think that's the direction, you know. You know, we keep these funds internal as much as possible and provide the tools for people to understand where they're at, people may have to pay for it on their own.
Yeah, the smaller grants, and I'm still gonna get the larger grants. So there's the two different grants, we have small Firewise grants, help those individuals that aren't in my project areas to get some work done. And then it shows me when there's a big community that all apply, that I should apply for a larger grant there instead of using this Firewise grant.
I think it's a motivational tool.
A one hundred percent.
But if we don't have it, then that would be the first place I would cut.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I did reach out to Cara Utter, who we contract with for our G I S services. What I was hoping that we could do is potentially incorporate, and when we create a new contract, incorporate any additional work into that contract. So I guess I had requested that that discussion begin. Just because the funding source unfortunately has dried out, so there needs to be an alternative funding source, which would be the general fund. So we might have to incorporate that into, if the commissioners are inclined to have another contract with Ms. Utter. For next fiscal year to potentially incorporate the additional services that she provides to the county into that contract.
Absolutely, and then to give you a little oversight with the whole worth assessment too. Our departments have graciously offered to help update stuff this year within this fiscal year of some of those assessments. To give me an idea of how much it's, how much time is gonna be associated with it, so they're not charging any funds to it right now. But that will help me determine in the future if I need to hire a three person module to go out do assessments. Or if the fire department still want to continue helping with assessments, stuff like that. So I think that's awesome that they helped with that, but because of the funds are going out, they decided to not charge me.
I got a question real quick, probably. Title one, two, and three funds, where do they specifically come from?
So it's broken, we, where do they come from within the, the big plot of money that is allocated to Valley County? Then we get a formula, a distribution that Title I gets this amount, Title II gets this amount, and then Title III gets this amount. That comes from the state? Yeah, the state of Idaho provides our office with the report, and then we do the calculations to distribute the money as indicated based on the report that we get from the state.
And the states, what's dried up the Title III?
No, the, the federal government has not reauthorized that funding.
Okay, so that, the funding does.
S R S is Title III.
What is?
S R S.
A portion of it, yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry, secure rural schools, S R S funds, Title I, Title II, Title III.
Okay, that's where the, that's the big dog. It comes through the state, then it comes out to everybody else. Okay, I appreciate that. I get it. Guy with the fancy red, white, and blue hat hits us every time.
Shared Storage Ship has authorized, this morning actually, they have hired a consultant for me for the next school year. So I will have someone for about roughly thirty days that I can hire from now until next fiscal year. So I do have that, so obviously. Person request is still there, but I do have help specifically with Shared Storage Ship. So that's awesome that Brian Davis did that.
Thank you, Brian Davis, just for the record, that is awesome. I think the partnerships that are being built in our region are just key and critical. I know that they are trying to help us, they see the value of our program and are, you know, helping to support. And I just think, you know, we can't do enough to state that, you know, we appreciate that support, we're willing to be a partner. And hopefully we can find partnerships as we move forward, but that will be a part in strengthening wildfire. I mean, when we have ninety percent, eighty nine percent of our valley is at risk, we have to do everything we can, but it needs to be a collaboration. Valley County cannot shoulder this all on our own, so it needs to be federal, they're the ones that own this property. It needs to be state, they've got a large portion, three percent is state owned, and Valley County is all partnering, partnering together, so. That's awesome. All right, any other questions for us?
Nope.
Information we need, okay, I'm sure we'll be seeing you more when we have more information.
Yep. We'll be soon every Monday.
All right.
Thank you, Mara.
Got a few minutes, and next up will be our coroner, unless Scott is, is he online?
He's unable to attend in person, so Commissioners, I do have it up, as you can see, there are no proposed changes for fiscal year twenty twenty six. He is requesting same amounts that were budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
So his deputy is just on an hourly basis?
Correct.
There is no?
And I do think she, that individual also gets a stipend when they're on call, when he is out of the area. There's a stipend that's paid to that individual as well, but it's just when they're, it's just an hourly position.
When they're called in.
So basically Scott is not requesting reimbursement on mileage when he's going to?
He has a, a vehicle. Madam Chairman, I see, I don't know what has happened, if the road department has not billed for that vehicle for this year, but he has, has, does not have any expenditures, which is odd. And we are looking into that.
Were you asked that?
Yeah, we're trying to work with the road department on why they haven't billed for fuel for the coroner's office for this fiscal year.
Well, that's kind of, the gasoline would be a question too, is that really up to date or is that, you know, current?
Less.
An investigation?
So I think, you know what, this is the right one. So this, yes, Madam Chairman, this is the fuel for, that's paid to Valley County for fuel. The travel mileage, he hasn't requested any reimbursement for any education travel. But yes, my apologies for vehicles, fuel. He is spending about a hundred dollars a month.
On the investigations. We had kept that high. And I'm trying to think, has legislation changed anything there that would impact them needing that high of a fund?
Madam Chairman, I guess I don't want to respond at this point in time, I'd rather coroner Carver respond, but I do know that. If you can see in fiscal year twenty twenty four, we had a significant expense for investigations.
Those were murder trials, correct? Or?
Those were just more unattended deaths, I believe, that actually he had requested the services of Ada County. For autopsies, an autopsy is approximately twenty eight hundred dollars. But again, I would defer to the coroner directly regarding the, how often an autopsy is requested compared to when it's not. I don't know.
We'll just keep an eye on that one as we move forward to have a touch point there. Twenty four, I mean, he's down this year, but you just kind of never know.
You never know.
Kind of investigations, you know, you just kind of take a level set.
Yeah.
And just so my fellow commissioners, you know, if he doesn't use that, that's in his carryover, carryover budget for the next year. So we just leave it in the budget, but then we don't have to levy for those funds again. We've already levied for them, they're already in his carryover budget.
But it counts as the, the general fund, when we do our calculations of remaining, remaining cash, we account for some of these. Expenditures that were not made in that remaining cash.
Budget goes over the general fund. So if we're over or under budget, we would be.
So do all carryovers come October first, just go into the general fund?
When we do our projections, Commissioner Thompson, what, what we do is we do our. In August, we will do our analysis of what has been expended, what has been collected. To determine what our remaining amount is to fund next year's budget, right? To have a balanced budget. So we have to take a hard look. Of what has not been expended to, and also project any remaining cash, excuse me, remaining revenue that's gonna be coming in. To determine what our remaining cash is for the next fiscal year.
I'm just curious.
Commissioners, there has been three times that the coroner has used Ada County coroner's office to conduct either an autopsy. But as Madam Chairman indicated, that changes from year to year. It's hard to really determine when an autopsy is gonna be requested and when it's not gonna be requested. I do think.
I think when Scott was giving his report this, this year, he said the biggest hardest ones are. Are the unexplained deaths, and he needs help. To search out why that person asked to make sure it is, you know, illegal. When something shady going on. So I, I think that might have been why we had so many that one year, I don't know. I'm glad it's now this year.
But moving on, our next one is not until ten forty five, and Dee's not here yet, I'm assuming she's coming in?
I believe so, Madam Chairman.
Okay, so let's go ahead and mute until ten forty five.
Mitch says he needs a.
Madam Chairman, we're on again.
Okay, welcome back. Next on our agenda is our budget workshop with our probation departments and juvenile detention with our Director Dee Phillips. So we're doing a little bit different this year. What we're looking for is input on changes, so either over budget, under budget. We're not going to do line by line on what your budget looks like, so, and we're not discussing salaries or benefits at this moment in time. Okay? So it looks like your weapons, the body armor, education, reducing your SCRAM fees, reducing UA, and increasing electronic monitoring. Let's talk about those areas.
So Madam Chairman, we'll just go to the weapons, body armor. It's my understanding from meeting with Director Phillips is that their existing body armor has expired and was purchased five years ago. Is that accurate? And there is a request to upgrade what they currently have, and I'll let Director Phillips present to the Commissioners on that specific item.
Yep, so it came to my understanding that our body armor, the vests that we wear into the community, are going to be expiring. There is grant funding and stuff out there, so at one point it was, we had quite a bit left over this year, so I was thinking, try and squeeze it in this year until I realized how much those cost. So the grant funding covers half of the body armor, as I understand from the Sheriff's Department. And the numbers that we came up with was me, meeting with the Sheriff's Department to get an idea of how much they cost, and how much it's cost them, and what it looks like. Because I think what we're wanting again is something that says probation on the back, before it didn't. And the ones that we had before, I don't believe that they're bullet, I think they're knife, because they're soft. So I don't think they were appropriate body armor. So this is a higher cost than I think what we may have had in the past. So there's five of us in that building, so we all need an upgrade.
So the eight thousand would actually be doubled if they, if they, would actually be half of that.
Commissioner Thompson, yeah, the Sheriff's Office is budgeting for their expense of body armor, but what Director Phillips is indicating is that there is a grant out there that we are applying for to pay for half of that cost. So what's budgeted for in her budget and in the Sheriff's Office, half of that will be funded through a grant.
Awesome.
And we have captured that on the revenue side that we're, we're not going to be discussing at this point in time, not today.
Okay.
Being that I never trust a grant, I ask for all of it and then hope for, Ken's already on it, so. And that's probably a higher cost. I think we asked for, looked at every bell and whistle that could be possible. That's just how I request is in case I'm missing something, and that's patches and sorts of stuff on the vest, though. Because I'd kind of like to match what the sheriff is doing if we could, and not make it look so different.
Great, and I think that's very appropriate. Education, so historically you guys have definitely not done this much, so you're asking to budget.
Yes, thank you. So this next year, and again, I'm looking at funding sources, so again, knowing I'm going to ask for everything, hoping that I can cover it with other sources. I had kind of stated several or a couple months ago that the juvenile probation officer is looking to go to post instructor development, and it's a week long. So it means I need to be able to cover her, her housing costs. I will likely be able to pay for her class out of lottery money that I get for the juvenile to support the juvenile probation officers. So I could probably pay for the cat, the class out of that, that's like six hundred, seven hundred dollars. It's going to be the cost of hotel. And then the purpose for her being, I wanted to get her instructor development then, is to get her certified through post for Archon for defensive tactics. And that's a two-week-long training, and I think it's like twelve hundred dollars to attend. So that's a chunk. But I do believe that the, paying out that from our department is not just going to help our department, but it's actually going to help law enforcement as well, because they also have Archon and they do that training. And so to be able to have a female certified, to be able to assist and facilitate those trainings, is going to help all of our entire partners that are working with law enforcement. So that's, that's, that increase in cost is housing, because they're, of course, never in just McCall. One's going to be in, we see, and I'm not sure where the, I don't know where the Archon training is yet.
So Dee, last year she went through post.
Correct.
This is a different type of post?
Yeah, well, same, same entity, but so Post gave her her certification to be a juvenile probation officer, to be an instructor. That is a whole other curriculum and a whole expectation, because then she can teach, as I can as well. You can teach any general topic throughout all of law enforcement if we so chose. But of course, stick with our own disciplines, but truly if they said, Dee, we need someone to facilitate DUI training, I should be able to teach that class and understand the lesson plan to be able to do so. So it's a blanket across the board of what they teach.
Awesome.
And then the Archon is the discipline, another specific discipline. Now again, I'm hoping that Post will actually support paying for that entire thing for Nikki, but they don't have their budgets yet, and so they don't know. So it's very possible I should be able to get hers covered in part by somebody else also, but nonetheless, I want to be prepared.
Awesome.
So those will just be, continue to level set that as you know more, because, you know, everybody just needs to keep in mind, once we do this budget, we're asking the taxpayers for those funds.
Correct.
So then if we don't need them, then we've asked for funds that we don't need. And so it's super critical that until we actually get to our approved budget, that if you do get those grants and you know it, you come in and adjust your budget.
Yeah, I can do that. I think since everyone's on the same timeline as VR, I don't know that I'll get those. I'll do my best.
Talk to us about the reduction in SCRAM?
I've shared that, actually, the reduction in SCRAM. So SCRAM is a device that goes on the ankle to detect consumption of alcohol as well as contact alcohol. We know how to look at, show that it's consumption of alcohol and not just hand sanitizer on their ankle. We don't use it. We rarely use it anymore. Our community, we have so many folks that are in construction or do lots of outdoor activities, and that device on their ankle just gets in their way. So we've been actually, decreased that, but what we find that we're using a whole lot more is the breathalyzer, the handheld breathalyzer. And the company that we partner with for that breathalyzer are really black and white. And so if they don't have their funding in, because they have to always pay it front, it is not in by like four o'clock on Fridays, because they're in the Midwest, the device gets shut down. And so if someone gets home from work at four fifteen, or four thirty, or five o'clock here, or they get paid on Friday, which is, that's the issue, is they typically get paid on Friday, they can't get to their bank fast enough to be able to get their money in. So we're finding that there's a stopgap, and I'd like to be able to support that so that these folks are being monitored in the community, they're usually DUIs, if they need to, and then either compensate and get the costs back if there is any discrepancies, which is not a lot, but at least we know they're safe.
It's like a unit that sits at home or where?
Personal breathalyzer, it goes with them. It's a device that's about this big, small little device, and it goes anywhere, they breathe into it about four times a day. We set the time, it's usually like, you know, seven noon, five, and then ten o'clock before they go to bed, and they have to breathe into it to ensure that they're not having alcohol.
Oh, if they're having a buddy breathe into it for them, you wouldn't know.
If they're what?
If they had a buddy breathing into it for them, you wouldn't know.
Oh, yes, we would, because they have a photo.
Oh, it does?
It takes their photo.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep, we're on it.
I just think of like a criminal, you know?
Personal experience here.
No, I don't drink at all, so.
Most devices that have a tube that you blow into also have a camera to ensure that it's the person blowing.
That's interesting. Good to know.
So that's what we then asked for an increase is under electronic monitoring, because that's the, that's the umbrella for electronic monitoring, as well as the breathalyzer, GPS is all under that.
And then it looked like you just had one other one, reducing the UA fees. Assuming that's, again, part of the electronic monitoring increase?
Well, actually, no, the UA fees, the drug testing fees. This year I decided to give it a little test to see how much it costs. So once upon a, what we were doing before is every person that would come in, we would do a test, and it would get sent to a lab for testing, every single one of them. And that's a cost of about fifteen dollars for the client. But there's a whole, and that would be anywhere, like, so if we were doing a hundred and fifteen, I think as I read the results to you, how many, maybe twenty-five actually show positive? You know? It's a lot of cost for our clients, as well as for the county when they don't pay. So we brought in a whole lot of different tests for instant tests. One covers fentanyl, because our, actually the lab tests don't cover fentanyl unless we request it, and it's an additional twenty-five dollar fee. So we brought in instant tests, or about thirteen, they test about thirteen different substances, so like four dollars and something cents our cost.
Good job.
And so if I just pay in fifteen dollars or ten dollars, which usually if they're doing instance, we then knock it down to ten, as well as then, like our breathalyzers. If a gentleman, like today, someone missed a blow test like at five o'clock in the afternoon, around dinnertime, I don't like when they miss dinnertime breath tests. So he's going to come in today, and we have a strip that's just alcohol, just like a buck something, so they're going to either pay five dollars, since it's a breathalyzer, I'm not going to have him pay, because that's seven dollars a day they're paying, so I can, that dollar, I'm going to, that cost, just to make sure that they're compliant. So we have everything from the dip test now for just alcohol, to a nine dollar, or a nine panel, which is probably about three dollars, to a thirteen panel, that's four dollars. And we even got now some swaps. We've got it covered, and all of it is cheaper than sending to the lab. And then we only send to the lab if it shows positive.
That's awesome. Great job, Dee.
We just try to be very specific with that.
Great improvement.
To save costs for, of course, the county, as well as to the clients.
So really, when I'm looking at your budget, we're hoping to get that forty-seven hundred covered by other means anyway, and then we'll continue this conversation as we move forward on what you know before the end of budget season.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
So the forty-seven hundred is already integrated into bottom line?
Yes.
If it helps, I have already the support. If it helps, I have already the support from post, if they have the money, they're going to pay for her. I already have the lottery money to be able to pay for such, it's a lot I probably already have. I just have, I don't want to promise anything.
Absolutely appreciate that. Full disclosure to the taxpayers, always the best. All right, perfect. Thank you so much.
Do you have one more, Madam Chairman?
Oh, sorry, juvenile. So knowing that your fees have gone up in Ada County, is this still, you think, are still covered?
Um, since we didn't use any of that last year and right now we just have the one in, I think, uh,
Thirty-five was plenty.
Mr. Clerk, I said, let's just leave the money as is, yeah. And so I say, let's just leave it. We're not going to, maybe nothing more and maybe something more. And for what it's worth, for, I went up to almost, was it two eighty-nine? For, um, drug and alcohol, inpatient treatment or mental health treatment, costs are up to four hundred dollars a night.
Well, and we will keep in the back of our minds that if we need to adjust the budget by ten or fifteen, this might be an area that we.
Might be an area that could be, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, yes. But I do caution, because you can have two kids, unfortunately, that will have serious cases that's at three hundred dollars a day, that might be in custody for a longer period of time until alternative solution is determined. That will heat up for lack of better terms, this budget. So I do think that at this point in time, leaving it where we have it is appropriate, but it can be adjusted potentially.
We rely on our clerk to remember all this and adjust accordingly?
Yeah.
That was an excellent budget officer for the county.
Yeah, the two clients that I can think of that, just so you understand the type of kids that would stay is the extreme violent kids that we have. We have one outside Boise County that shared our region with us. Ended up staying for months to two months. And then we've had, uh, serious sexual offense that did not get waived to the adult system that stayed in detention for two months because it was just no precedent. So we can always hope that those never happen, but those are the ones that lasted about six years, two cases that stayed in detention.
Have it not needed.
Yeah, we'll just hope that there isn't any like last year.
Again, it's just, it's balancing our budget and not asking the taxpayers for more than we actually need. Once they give it to us, they give it to us, so.
We appreciate it. Keep me safe as well as neighbor safe, you know? Thank you.
Perfect. All right, up next is our HR. We'll go ahead and just proceed with that one. So Director Savoy.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, based on what I show right now, there were no changes, uh, but I do believe that as you are fully aware, the HR department will be adding a new position. And I don't know if, uh, when we were doing the budget request, if that was included or not. Budget request.
We did mention needing increases in office supplies and cell phone.
If that position was approved.
If that position was approved.
Going to be approved, so I do think we need to definitely make those adjustments, uh, in those specific expense lines.
And this is for the payroll.
Well, I'm adding that to my list of employees for next year. Um, and I'm looking at, you were over for the last two years in a row on background checks. I think that needs to be kicked up.
Yes, absolutely. And also to let you know that twelve hundred that I've got budgeted there, uh, that I just maintained last year, that's, we do, I think we run about fifty dollars a background. So if I do two backgrounds a month, that's a hundred, that's twelve hundred. We're doing more than that. So the prices are increasing on that.
A reality wise, what is that number? Does it need to be two thousand?
I think two thousand would be a very decent number to go with on that. Also, I want to be looking at the, maybe switching up vendors on who we have providing us with that service right now. I'm not thrilled with the results we're getting, who we're using. I want a more comprehensive background.
Is our online system that we're using, and I can't remember the name of it, but they apply online. Do they do the background checks or do we actually send it out then for background check?
We then get the applications, we then go through the interview applicant or the hiring process. We select an individual and at that point we give them a contingent offer. Contingent upon their ability to pass a background check and then I submit the background or the request to the vendor that we use.
So we truly are, uh, using our own vendor to join these, okay. Are we using the same vendor that Sheriff's Office is using?
Sheriff's Office, to my knowledge, does it all in-house. They have a background investigator who probably does most of their work. Literally just plugging through and going through it. I do not know if the Sheriff's Office has a vendor that they do certain things like credit backgrounds or not. I don't know. They do easily, they do half the county improvement or hiring, they do backgrounds on half of them.
I'd be interesting to see if there's any collaboration there that we add.
They did quite a few turnovers.
Awards. So it's like we're going to be using all of your awards this year. So do we need to increase that?
Yeah, I would like to increase that as well. I think I've got my number at at least two thousand for next year on that one.
So Doug, did these not get updated either or are these updates after your meeting with clerk's office?
These are before the update.
Okay, so we've got numbers that, what other line items did you update?
Office supplies, I did. Again, that one was mostly due to having a, a new staff member coming on board and not knowing what office equipment I'll need to buy that individual. Mileage and registration, I asked for a small increase up to six thousand for that, but to break it out like it had been in years past, three thousand under mileage, three thousand under registration fees. I'm not going to be using that money this year. I, it was for an HR conference I was able to go to last year. I'd love to go this year, but I don't have time. So I'll be saving the taxpayers that much this year.
Breaking that out separately?
Yes, breaking that out, three, three thousand and three thousand. And that again would be for probably an annual conference and once I do hire a staff member, that individual and I will probably alternate year to year, those who stays home.
Do you look at, uh, hiring that individual before the end of the fiscal year?
Well, I'll have that person hired before the end of the fiscal year. If I have to go out on the street with a sandwich board and find him on the, I'm going to find somebody. But I, the applicants are, there are not many coming in right now. It's, but I've got a couple, three different plans in my mind for that.
On the employee drug testing, so, um, Dee was just telling us about the process they're using. Is there opportunities to do something? I mean, you're the only one that they could go to, but can we use maybe the jail or something to do the employee drug testing? Or is it appropriate still to send them out to?
Well, I think if there's a way to utilize internal, how to do it, I think we should look at that. Again, like the background, we only ask the people who we've offered a job to. So they're virtually on payroll at the time we do that. And then we do the random drug testing.
Kind of expensive, so maybe if we could use those test strips that Dee's using.
Problem is, is Madam Chairman, Commissioners, is that would be a Valley County employee administering that task to those individuals. Are you going to rely on HR or probation or the jail? And I don't know if that's in the best interests.
We shouldn't have any independent.
In the event we get a positive.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Not to.
Makes sense to have them.
Separation.
Is expensive.
It's extremely expensive. I think what Mike and I had talked about is maybe going to quarterly, um, testing in- instead of the, what the current system, I believe it's, it's weekly.
Actually, it's quarterly now and probably going to maybe twice a year for the randoms. That's the one where we really get the expenses that we're randomly drug testing. I would say maybe twenty percent of the staff who are, not all the staff.
Driving vehicles.
Typically staff that are driving vehicles or in safety sensitive positions over here. But that's probably about at least half the staff, if not a little bit more, are eligible to be randomly drug tested. And we get probably every quarter, probably fifteen or so, and they're a hundred bucks a pop. Would it be, oh, it can't be that, is that that many? It's, well, it's, well, yeah, I'm.
Spending eight thousand.
Already this year and worse, we still have five months to go. I've probably got at least one invoice I'm waiting to get caught up on. I'll blow past that budget, I'm sure.
Eight thousand dollars a year, I mean, that's, that's eight thousand a year.
I would, yeah. I'm not going to, I'm going to probably break past eighty-five hundred this year.
I think maybe we need to reconsider if we're actually, is that keeping us safe? I mean, it's a health and safety issue for those that are actually using our vehicles, our liability. And we do have to consider that.
I would say probably for me to contact I-Crimp and ask them, just say, what are you guys' best recommendations on this? Because if they say, oh, no, in fact, we recommend you do it more often, then that'd be a different conversation, but.
We find out what other counties are doing, but you know, yeah, ask I-Crimp. I mean, it's a liability issue is what we're really trying to negate here, I think.
And I know we get a discount on our workers' compensation. I don't know if we get a discount on our risk management throughout this workers' comp. State Insurance Fund gives us a discount because we have a drug testing program, which is new hire, random and post accident and reasonable suspicion. I can definitely say I would not touch the post accident one at all. That one saved the road departments bacon when it was.
I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, but yeah, ask I-Crimp or ask the state insurance fund, you know, what their parameters are. Do we have to do it quarterly? Can it be six months?
I actually really like having it. I think not only is it a liability, but it also, it's a deterrent. If people understand that there's always the opportunity that they may get drug tested, I think it's a good idea.
Well, and it does, and just for the record here, uh, the, the list of names comes to me, the random choice of names, I don't make those names. Uh, they come to me from the company that administers our program. They're the ones that say every quarter, here's your list of names. All they ask me is once a year, update your whole list of people that would be eligible for drug testing. And then they give me a quarterly list. And we have people that'll be on there. I'll get them, I've had some that are getting three quarters in a row, the same individual. And why, I tell you, by the time I send them that third one in a row, they're like, what's going on? But they can spread the word through the county that, hey, just because you take a test doesn't mean you're not going to get called up three months later.
Well, and I, that's good feedback, you know, it might be worth the funds, but I would just research.
We'll look into it anyway, at least give you some information on which to make a decision.
So you already got a, a number figured for this new employee plugged in?
Pardon me?
The new employee plugged in?
Yes, yeah, we have a, an estimate, I think, of the cost or a salary cost for that.
It's has been included.
So the training and development, you're going to have a new employee, you may need training there too.
I asked for an increase on that one up to six thousand.
So your budget is substantially increasing then, once we get those increases in there. We will continue to look at that and then, once we get the in- increases, have your explanation of those now.
All right.
And how many people are approaching you as far as new employees? How many divisions?
Oh, um, I want to say probably about six. I was running them through my head back there. I think we have at least six, maybe seven divisions are asking for at least one staff member.
For the record, we're not going to be able to fund all those, so.
I figured as much, but I'm giving them the same. Giving them the same information that I give everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. All right, up next is our prosecuting attorney. Senado.
Good morning.
Good morning, all.
Thank you for sending us your budgets.
My pleasure.
They're a little bit early, so the way that we're doing this this year, we are looking for increased budgets, reduced budgets, anything that's off the norm. And not addressing any of the salaries or anything like that at this point in time, so I don't A and B, we're just doing the rest of it. So it looks like for you, you're pretty, the only thing you've got a big change on is victim resources.
Yeah, uh, the victim resources, the four thousand that there is for, um, just to have some things in the office for victims when they come in, whether it's, you know, kids coloring books, stuffed animals, uh, those sorts of things. And then a little bit of contingency money for the service dog, Killian. Um, uh, cause he does a lot of work with our victims, obviously.
Who takes care of Killian?
Ashley.
Oh, Ashley does.
Yeah, yeah, she's, she's his full-time caregiver and she's, she's responsible for most of his care, I mean, all of his care really, his food, his, that, all that stuff. But we, you know, in time and time, the days and the tears that we would like to at least be able to help her with. She does put in a lot of, a lot of time, training and working with him. You know, bringing him to the courthouse for victim meetings. He was here on, on Friday, we had some sentencing hearings with, uh, we had like a oh, she's about fifteen now, but she was a victim when she was seven, uh, and so she had, uh, coming there with her during the sentencing. He helps a lot.
Pretty cool dog. We were sitting in a meeting with, over at the, your guys knew with, uh, get who was Scott, I think was there with me and Brian. Killian comes up to the glass door and I let him in. Oh, big dog. You just freely just all get out.
Oh, yeah, he's just a big teddy bear.
Madam Chairman, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think all of the changes were made. I need to find out what.
I don't understand, because we reduced the rent substantially, but his budget at the bottom is only up to four thousand.
Well, yeah, I, I need to. I don't think, unfortunately, we added all of the changes into the software. It was like we just added a few and I'll need to talk and find out what in fact happened. But the travel, this is one where you probably have to talk each one with you. The travel went up from eight thousand to ten thousand.
Hey, we will talk to us about that, Brian, because, you know, historically you haven't come anywhere close to that. So what, what are you thinking of changing there?
Well, um, this next, the, the reason for the increase this next year is, um, I think we had budgeted five thousand in twenty-four and then eight thousand in twenty-five. That increase was because we added the new attorney. And so we had additional costs for, um, training. We basically, the, the attorneys basically do two trainings a year and it's through IPAA. We do the Idaho Prosecuting Attorneys Association, uh, trainings that they do, uh, each year. Sometimes, you know, uh, we'll send somebody to a different training, like a national type training. We know that next year we're going to send Anna and Kathleen to a training on, um, implementing some parts of our case management software that we haven't done before. And that is basically, you know, all of, all of our uh, evidence, like our, our digital evidence and their volume with that is fairly staggering. Because it's all photographs on body video from officers for every case they do. Um, you know, those kinds of digital things that we keep as evidence are currently, we're just using OneDrive to do that. But that is, um, we, it's not, it's not made for that kind of volume. We can't, can't continue to do that. So we're going to use the, the software, CarpeL is the case management software that we have. They have a they have the functionality for us to be able to keep our evidence within that program. But how to do it and how to best store it and how to make it accessible to the attorneys, how to share it with defense attorneys. That is something that, uh, that's, that's what the training is for, is setting all that up.
So Brian, when you have, you know, I listened to what you're saying on case evidence. Is there a redundancy backup to that? I mean, that's not something you'd want to lose track of in cyberspace.
No, uh, I mean, there's no redundancy other than the, the sheriff's office keeps it too. the sheriff's office keeps it, too. And so, you know, we request it from them, they send it to us, we store it in the case. So I guess there's the redundancy in sheriff's office. They have the stuff, too, but I, you know, how long they keep it or, you know, what their, what their storage limitations are, I'm not sure. It's pretty safe. I mean, if that's what it's built for, it's safer than OneDrive, for sure. Because that's, you know, it's, the security is good, but it's not what it should be, probably, for this sensitive information.
There's statute that, you know, once a case, case is totally closed, put to bed, and, uh, you have to keep those kind of records in perpetuity, or does it, you know, ten years?
So, so there's, there are statutes governing some of that. For example, um, uh, in cases of like sex crimes, where we have DNA and things like that, we have to basically keep that indefinitely. Or unsolved sex crimes, where we don't, where we didn't make a, an arrest. Or, uh, in cases where people went to trial and they're appealing or things, we have, we have to keep all that indefinitely. The statute kind of tells us what of those things we have to keep forever. Otherwise, you know, there's, there's no statute that tells us specifically, like, how long we have to keep evidence of a misdemeanor crime or felony crime or whatever. But we have internal policies, uh, that, uh, that dictate how long we keep that stuff. So after every case, I prepare, Kathleen prepares, uh, a closing sheet, which basically says, this case is, is concluded. The evidence is no longer needed. You can, you know, destroy it, or do whatever you do with it, uh, at, you know, per your, your policy. So that, that might mean that forty-two days after the case is over, which is the appeal period has passed, there's no appeal, and you can go ahead and destroy it. It happens on a, you know, we, we do it fairly regularly to kind of keep on top of that.
But Doug, on that spreadsheet, which of those items did we not capture?
It, it looks like quite a few, Madam Chairman. So what I'm gonna do is just pull up the narrative that was submitted by Mr. Nago.
If you want me to just pull up the, if you want me to just pull up the document they had that didn't have the increases on it, I can just go through them. Cause I have the ones that, where we asked for increases.
This is what we're looking at now.
Yeah, so the eight for travel is going to ten. The, was there any other questions on that, and reasoning for that?
Well, the only thing historically, I mean, that the eight is still probably higher than what you needed. So, I mean, you guys are, I don't know what between now and first of October you're doing, but what I'm hearing you say is that forty-five hundred from twenty-four is not sufficient. Twenty-five, you anticipate using the full eight thousand between now and October first?
I don't think so. I think we'll be a little over five thousand.
So why go to ten if you're not even using the eight that you're currently budgeted for?
Well, like I said, it's for the additional training for the, for, uh, Hannah and Kathleen. And then, um, just to make sure that we have enough to budget for the, uh, the trainings that we do do.
Okay, so if you think you need to go to ten, that's fine, but.
The, I, I mean, I'll also say that the, the cost of those is going up. So the, the hotel stays, you guys see this with IAC, too. The cost to stay in the hotels is rising, uh, the amount, uh, that it costs for travel is, is going up as well. So it's just, um, it's just to be, to be safe, so that we're not under budget. But could we get by with eight? Maybe.
Just track it for next year.
Sure. Let's see, the, the next one that went up, the cellphone budget, for some reason, uh, I think we asked for an increase last year from two to three with the addition of Arnie. And that, it just didn't, never made it through. And so we're gonna be over budget on that. So we just, we're just asking for three, so that we can, uh, do the stipend for all of our attorneys. And that's because we all, we share on call duties, so we have to have those. Dues and memberships. That one is currently at sixteen, that's gonna go up a little bit, uh, up to twenty-one. The main increase there is, Westlaw access fees are gonna go up to seventeen-five. I mean, that's, it's just robbery, I mean, there's, those are, those go up every year, and unfortunately, we just can't live without it.
You have to have it, they have, yeah. Is there anybody other than Westlaw that you should be researching, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, we've looked into Lexus, um, but, you know, they're close to the same price, and it's not as good, and it's just hard to, you know. Then you got months of trying to learn a new system, too. So, uh, we haven't pulled the trigger on that yet, but, um, and then the other dues there are sixteen hundred dollars for bar dues for the attorneys. Sixteen fifty for IPAA dues. Uh, and then there's some smaller ones. Uh, Kathleen, uh, has a hundred dollar fee to the Idaho Victim Witness Association dues, as well as her, um, dildo dues.
So those, those two gals be doing training, they're, they're pretty stable in your office, and
Yeah.
Like, they enjoy what they're doing.
You still looking for one more?
We are, we're looking for a part-time civil. But Hannah and Kathleen are, Kathleen does all of our victim witness work, plus she does all of the, she's my legal assistant, does all of like discovery and, and all that stuff. They're, they're busy, but super hard workers, and very, very good. Yeah. We can't live without them.
Go put that on tape, please. We have a discussed salary.
It's, uh, and then the other, the other thing was the addition of the, of the four thousand. So the to, the grand total went up twelve, from fifty-three, one seventy-five to sixty-five.
Your education's going up, too, correct?
No.
Education's staying at three.
And contracts others, it looks like sometimes you use that, sometimes you don't.
Yeah.
Well, it just depends on the caseload, as far as whether that's an outside.
Yeah, and that's, you know, uh, a very small budget in case we need, uh, to employ outside counsel. We, we may, you know, it's just, it's kind of on a case-by-case basis. I, I don't know if you saw this in here, but, um, this year has been particularly challenging with the, uh, number of lawsuits, uh, where I get sued.
People are crazy, I'm sorry. Go put that on record.
Our prosecutor attorney gets sued.
Yeah, so.
What's an example of that?
Yeah, let me, I'll, so the, and I'll, I'll talk more about these, uh, later in the executive session, but. So what's, what's happened is when, when certain groups don't like a law that's passed by the legislature, what they've taken to doing is they sue the Attorney General. Uh, and then they also sue all of the county prosecutors, or at least as many as they can find, that have people who might be affected by the new law. So, for instance, Planned Parenthood, uh, sued over the new abortion law. They sued the Attorney General, and they sued all of the county prosecutors. And what they're seeking is an injunction to keep us from enforcing the law. And that's what they're, so that's what they're asking for now.
Is that gonna be challenged in a higher court, do you think? I mean, is Labrador right now at the Supreme Court or any kind of a higher to try and remove the county prosecutors?
Yes, uh, we, we've, we've moved, uh, to dismiss the county prosecutors. All of those county prosecutors were dismissed, other than Ada County and Valley County.
You are kidding me?
I'll explain why. There is a reason why. And so, uh, because two of the named plaintiffs, really, they, they're, they're two doctors that are named as plaintiffs in it. And one of them practices here in McCall, and one of them is down. So that's why we keep seeing.
Oh, my goodness.
I'll, I'll tell you, uh, I'll, I'll tell you a little bit more about that one in the executive session. And then there's, you know, we've had others, you know, uh, the Donnelly Library sued us over the library law, same thing, asking for an injunction. We had, uh, some groups sue us recently for the, because of the, um, immigration law. Where we agreed to basically enforce immigration laws. State and county officers to enforce the immigration law. So we were, we were sued over that one as well. So it's, um, it's a trend that I think has, um, a number of motivations behind these lawsuits. Again, I'll explain more about that, uh, in the executive session today, but, um.
Taxpayers need to know this is all impacting their budgets.
It is, um, uh, but it, you know, it, it certainly is a, we can't, unfortunately, we can't just ignore. I can't just, I can't just say, look, I don't care about your lawsuit. If the, if the law is found constitutional, enforce it, if it's not, I won't. You know, it's as simple as that. I don't have any, it's the Attorney General's responsibility to, to fight about the constitutionality of these laws. Uh, and it's my responsibility to enforce them if they are found constitutional. But by, but by, you know, bringing us all into those, uh, we have to, you know, at the very least, we gotta figure out, okay, are we gonna be, are we gonna go ahead and ask the Attorney General to represent us on this? Will he represent us on these? Will they kind of fight the fight, and, and, um, and we just kind of provide input and things like that? Or are we gonna represent ourselves? We have to just kind of make that decision on a case-by-case basis, and, uh, there's obviously, there's certain things that go into that. And some of them, we're pretty sure we can just get dismissed outright on our own. Some of them, we feel like it's better to have the Attorney General represent us. Uh, but at the end of the day, we're always cognizant of trying to make sure that we, um, that, you know, we're, we're not, you know, spending a bunch of money on this, or risking, risking being, uh, ordered to pay a bunch in attorney fees as well, and so.
Much of your time gets taken up by these, what I call frivolous lawsuits.
Yeah, more than I'd like.
Well, that's not what I wanted to hear.
So, Brian, I think the only other thing from your, um, information that you provided would be, any software upgrades is gonna come through the IT budget. Is there anything that is a large expenditure that you would like to explain, or?
Not that I, not that I know of. Um, I think we're already good there. We, we've been talking with Jeremy and working with him on the, um, software. The software should be good as it is, it's just a matter of learning how to be able to build the evidentiary part into it, which is fairly complex, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Nago? Thank you very much. We'll keep in touch, and those updates should be in the next conversation we have regarding your department, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be talking to you a little bit more in a second.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Next up on our budget workshop, workshop is our assessor. Professor Leeper. First up on the assessor's office. Now, does everyone understand the way that Sue's divisions work? She oversees three different divisions, so each one will be a little bit separate. Assessor's office first. So Sue, what we're doing this year is we're just really looking for changes? We're not gonna go through every line item?
Um, so I'm only requesting a change on one line item, and that would be the travel registration fees. As I projected out, uh, looking at the, you know, everything's going up, the hotels, the food, the conference, uh, registration prices, et cetera.
But Doug, is that an increase? Because it's not reflecting from last year. It's not there either?
Unfortunately, I don't think that they saved when we added them, Madam Chairman, so.
We have a so, or a software issue then?
Technical glitch right now is what we're gonna call it. So I will go back and make sure that we did in fact capture all of the increases that were necessary.
Okay, so Sue, will you let us know that thirty-two fifty is not current, so what?
I, I'm requesting it be moved to seven thousand.
Oh.
Well, I haven't asked for an increase in this number ever. Uh, I don't think June did either, and the problem is, is it's just, it's getting worse and worse every year. So I went in and projected out from what my balance is now, um, to add the IAC and the IACA conferences in there that will be, uh, it'll take us through the end of this budget year, and I'm gonna be in the negative thirty-six forty-five. So I was requesting an increase of thirty-seven fifty to cover those two conferences.
So.
And part of it, too, is, uh, the, DeeDee and I usually share a hotel room, and, you know, that's.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that, so.
So I, I don't think that's a great idea.
I would agree with that. So Doug, will you go to the other screen again? So currently, what you're stating is between now and the end of this year,
Yeah.
you will add another thirty-six hundred to that, so you'll be at seventy-one this year? Okay.
So I, I was requesting that the thirty-two fifty be increased to seven thousand, and that's it for this budget, that's it. So an increase of overall thirty-seven fifty. From what we already have on there now.
And tell me again what that thirty-seven fifty is going to, you're going to different conferences, new conferences?
No. That'll cover the IAC, which I go to every year, and the IACA, which is the Assessor's Conference.
But those should already be in those past two years. Just wanna make sure we capture this.
I'm aware, but DeeDee and I always share a room, which has kept costs low, which I don't think is probably a good idea. And the registration price, uh, fees have went up, hotel rooms are going up, everything's going up, as you know. So, between not sharing rooms, uh, and the increased, uh, in cost of what it takes to put on a conference.
Well, it's good to know when we do our budget. I'm not sharing rooms with these guys either.
Well, I don't blame you.
We can't take you.
I snore.
Neil, I've been told I do, too. Not all the time, just part of the time.
My wife says she doesn't snore, I said.
My husband says that, too. I beg to differ.
No idea, that's why I don't share either.
Okay, the DMV budget, I do not, uh, I don't require any changes. We actually reduced that quite a bit last year, um, but it's fine where it's at, so nothing.
This is DMV?
Yes.
Um, on supplies at all, with moving to a new location, is that gonna be, anything that could be in question?
Um, so.
Right now, you.
The supplies, yeah, we're down to two hundred.
This year.
What's that?
You haven't spent anything this year.
No.
But, yeah, I'm looking at those fourteen hundred for twenty-three and twenty-four.
I know.
Okay.
Um, we used to take out the, um, the cost manual that we get that, uh, for like the park models, that help us with that. Um, so we actually took twelve hundred, is my bud, is my budget fourteen hundred before, I think? Well, anyway, we used to take that, but we moved that money to the revow budget, because really, that's the budget that it should come out of. So we just did some cleanup last year. Yeah, yeah. And so here, she'll probably start needing some supplies here soon. Um, ITD does pay for, uh, the envelopes, uh, the paper, the ink on the printer, you know, all that stuff. And so they.
The hundred should be enough then.
They, yeah, they have minimal, minimal, um, expenses in there.
And then the last one's revow?
Uh, the only request I have in revow is, um, in our dues and memberships. Uh, that would cover, under I double A O, membership fees have went up, and as well as I double A P memberships. Um, so I'm gonna probably, I, I think I'm gonna end up in the negative. Um, that, and I also, they sent out a letter saying that, uh, so each person fifteen dollars, and they're increasing it to twenty dollars per person for twenty-six, and then they're increasing it to twenty-five dollars per person in two thousand twenty-seven. So the. So the, the fees, uh, membership fees are going up. Uh, so that's why I've asked for a hundred dollars additional on the dues and membership line. So asking from one fifty to two fifty. And then on our education, the classes are starting to become more expensive and they have been, but I've just been sucking it up. Um, but I think it's time to ask for a thousand dollars more for our education classes. Since they are required to keep certification, um. I have to get Chris certified and I may have possibly one more position that I have to.
So, on, I know that there's been conversation about revouching another employee. And that's for the state requesting you to increase your employees?
Y- yes.
So with that, do these numbers reflect an additional employee?
Yes.
They do, okay.
Yeah, I got myself covered whichever way it goes.
Okay.
Worst case scenario, the money goes back to the general fund at the end of the budget year.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
That's all I've got. It's pretty simple. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Miller, for starting the budget conversations. I think it's important that we start them early and just. Continue to work together until we get a final budget. And that won't be until end of July, first of August.
Do you know when you guys want to meet regarding a budget request?
I don't think we're close to that one yet. That's my opinion. Doug, it'll probably be June is my guess.
Ish. If it's, if it's a new position, you're working with Mike, right? Is it a new position rather than a revow position or?
It's a revow position.
All I would encourage you to do is discuss with Mike.
Cause I have.
Is it gonna be, uh. Assessor one, two, or three?
Well, one to begin with.
Okay, so those are just some conversations that I would begin with, Mike.
Okay, he told, I've had all those conversations with him. And he said that, and I, I put together some research, uh, for, you know, how many parcels we're adding. Uh, to the county every year. And you take one great big parcel and they subdivide it. And so now you from, you went from one lot to fifty lots. You know, we're adding about between four or five hundred parcels a year. Uh, and usually the average appraiser has about a thousand parcels that they deal with every year. Well, you keep adding to that, your workload's getting greater. So, anyway, I have a bunch of numbers for you guys to meet about that whenever you're ready.
And would you just educate the commissioners on, I kind of engaged in this conversation three years ago with June, so I'm a little more familiar. But the revow, the state actually oversees the number of parcels and gives to you direction on the number of. Revow appraisers they want to see within her department. So some of this is outside of our control. I would like them to understand.
So we, um, the state, we have to do, the assessor, all the assessors have to do a five-year plan. And so we have to project out five years of everything, um, parcel counts. Uh, employees, um, holidays, uh, PTO. I mean, it's a very, very in-depth, uh, plan. And in that plan, it basically tells you how many people you need, um, and then you project out even five years. So as of two thousand twenty-three. I have been three-quarters of a person short. But we made it work. And then last year, you know, same deal, um. But the county had other needs and basically you guys asked, you know, if you guys absolutely don't need it, please, let's. We need to get some of these areas taken care of. So, I've kinda bit my tongue for two years now and so I'm hoping it will be my turn this year.
Basically, as, um, basically as the county grows, your department has to grow.
Absolutely.
Kinda gauged on that.
Yes.
I follow you.
Yep.
So, with knowing the number of lots that are approved, because a lot of things will get their preapprovals. And then through the final plating process, drop out of the system.
These, these are, actually, I have numbers on every level for you guys to look at. Um, but the ones are the final ones that we actually had to put on the rolls.
So final plat is where you're taking.
Where we actually took one great big parcel. We broke it into fifty and now we have fifty lots on the rolls instead of one.
Okay. Yeah, cause a lot of the ones that we've been approving in the past couple of years may never get built because of the cost.
Right.
To do it, so.
Right. But no, I've got numbers on every level of that. You know, the reviewed, the finals for the year, the reviewed, you know, and so forth. So whenever you guys are ready for that, you just let me know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I, I, it's really interesting. We do, we are having a lot of conversations with people about the number of lots that have been platted. You know, how many are available. And so if you have that, that would be good information.
Um.
Don't worry about it right now. I'm just curious.
So you're asking for how many bare lots do we have in Valley County?
I can run a report of that.
So you're, you're talking about billable lots, not acreages?
Probably approved. Approved billable lots. All right, thank you. All right, without being last on our agenda, we will adjourn for lunch. And then we will be back at one o'clock with a, uh.